Meeting of the regular meeting of the Windsor Heights City Council come to order. Roll call. I don't think I'm muted, Travis.
I can hear you, Mayor. You were unmuted a second ago.
Pardon?
I can hear you.
Yeah, Mike can hear you too.
Okay, roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Here.
Joseph Jones.
Here.
Michael Fredo. Mike Jones.
Here.
And Teresa Harms.
She's here, I know.
Yeah, she said, I brought her lips.
Oh, sorry, I was on mute. I'm here.
I was gonna say, we saw you, it was just.
I saw it.
That mute button is a bummer sometimes. Folks, please join me in a pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Motion to approve the agenda.
We're moved.
Any discussion on it?
Second.
Roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Fredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones. Or, Mike, yeah, Mike Jones.
Yes.
And Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Motion to open the public hearing on the fiscal year 2021-22 budget.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Fredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
And Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Since this is a public hearing and open to the public, Travis, have you seen anything come in?
No, I haven't.
Pardon?
No, I have not.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to make any comments? If so, please identify yourself. Nothing in the chat room, Travis?
Um, I'm not seeing anything.
Okay. Motion to close the public hearing.
Moved.
Back in.
Roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Fredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
And Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Consideration of Resolution 2021-09 approving and adopting the annual City of Windsor Heights operating budget for fiscal year 2021-2022. Motion.
Move to approve. Second.
Discussion.
Um, this is Teresa. I have a few questions. I just may be seeking some clarification. Under, um, I'm on page two of the, um, executive summary of the budget. I see, um, there's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the public uh, safety parking lot replacement, and then there's also a hundred and thirty-five that's out of the ATA-E funds. Is that the same dollars or is that, are those together make up the, the total for the parking lot? The parking lot actual cost is a hundred and fifty thousand, a hundred and thirty-five will be ATE and the fif- the balance of fifteen thousand will come from road use tax. Okay, thanks Rochelle. I was just, it seems duplicative in this document, so. Yeah, the way, the way it was set out, we'll change it differently next year. Okay, thank you. That's helpful. Um, and then, um, the, I, I know we had some conversations, um, last time about the Parks and Trails money and, um, so I want to have a conversation about the, um, ATE funds, uh, specifically and whether or not, um, how those are, um, quote unquote, allocated or speculated in the budget and are those now under just, um, construction or are these specified because I think that the, well, I guess I would move that we put those dollars, that hundred and, um, whatever the balance is minus that one thirty-five, so the rest of those dollars, so one point three, whatever it is, into, um, constru- I don't want to call it construction, repairs, capital improvements. Um, and so how can we make sure that's articulated here? I would make a motion to do that, I guess, if that's what we need to do. If you can help me understand where that is so we can make an appropriate motion. Sure, I think what the budget states is exactly what you just said. So what that, what the budget shows is the general fund, um, having the one point five seven eight million dollars for, from ATE funds and those funds then being moved into capital projects um, to be only used for capital projects. Um, so that's as far as I can go with the budget on specifying anything, but that's what this budget does. It just moves ATE from general fund to capital projects. So at any point in the future, in fiscal year twenty-two, council can make the decision to spend some of that money or all of that money or none of that money, um, for whatever capital project they deem they want to. So, or you could decide not to use it at all. Okay, very good. And I, and I understand how we still have to make the approvals and all of that good, good stuff. So thank you, Rochelle. I appreciate that. I think that, um, and I appreciate you guys laying this out here, um, like this. However, I know we've continued, um, amongst the council. Certainly I'm not going to speak for anybody else and not trying to do that. Um, but there was concerns that I think that this is suggesting to the, um, our residents that this is what they can expect or this is what's going to happen. And I think that that's also outlined in the CIP. And so I guess I, when, when we get to the CIP conversation, I want to have a conversation about how we update that document to reflect the conversation that we're having today, um, so that it doesn't appear as though these, this is how we're spending that money because I, right now, I don't think that this is positive communication on what we're, um, I think the conversations that, that we've already had. So, um, anyways, I just wanted to, to throw that out there. Okay, I'm gonna, I'll quit talking for the moment, but I'm, I'm gonna reserve my right to come back with additional questions. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Uh, yeah, Dave, I would, I would mention just on page six of this, uh, uh, of this packet here that says a slight change in fiscal year expenses. Uh, yet it's, I don't know how you define slight because it isn't slight to me when it's, um, over one and a half million dollars. So, that's what I'm reading at least. The fiscal year expenses are estimated at twenty-eight million, eight hundred and forty-seven thousand. And the prior year was estimated at, uh, twenty-seven thousand, or twenty-seven million, excuse me, eighty-five thousand.
Sure, um, Mike, that, that actual increase is due to the 2020B bond payments, which are in the amount of, that bond payment is one million, nine hundred, five thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars.
Okay, uh, but all I'm saying is the, the, the use of the word slight. Well, I'm not saying words used or that it's not justifiable, but I just.
Well, we can take slide out if that bothers you.
Well, I just think that's, you know, Teresa's talking about, um, you know, public perception somewhat, and that's certainly not slight in my book. So, so, uh, that, that's, that's what I would add on that one. Or delete on that one, I guess.
Any other comments?
I do want to state that we have two options tonight. You have option A, which is to leave the levy at fourteen point four seven, or you have option B, which is to, um, change the levy to fourteen dollars, which would result in the debt service levy fund reserves of two hundred and sixty-four thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six dollars being used.
And so that would leave how much, Rochelle?
It still leaves, um, close to five hundred thousand dollars in the debt service levy fund as reserves.
Okay.
So we would have, there would still be plenty of reserves in case of, in case, in case it was needed.
Rochelle, as an aside, do we have an idea how much money we're gonna get from the stimulus?
Um, we do. I actually have a little bit of an update on that. I'm not sure if you want it now or you want it later.
I think it's wrong, you know.
Sorry, what'd you say?
Yes, please tell us now.
Absolutely. Um, we don't have any dollar figures at this point, but what we do know is that this is called the American Rescue Plan. This is the stimulus package that was, passed on March tenth, and this is, um, gonna be funds directly from the federal government to us. Um, the first portion will, will be received on May tenth or by May tenth. The balance will be received one year later. And they do give a calendar year of 2024 when the money has to be spent by. Um, there's things, the things that we can spend the money on, uh, revenue replacement. So the money we did lose from the community center will be able to replace that. Um, look, money that we didn't receive from lost will be able to replace that. Um, we can, uh, use the funds for premium pay for essential workers, assistance to small businesses, hard-hit industries and economic recovery, and investments in water, sewer and broadband infrastructure. And those are just really high level at this point. Um, I'm sure in the next, in the next few weeks, we will get much more detailed information.
Well, that's what we, you know, needs to be quantifiable, so. I appreciate the report, but that doesn't.
Yeah, and until I get more information, I can only give you what I've got.
I understand.
Rochelle, thanks for sharing that. It's helpful. Um, I think it'll be critical for us to, um, not approach that from the perspective of doing any replacement of our current existing budget. Um, I appreciate your comments about you can replace the, the funding that you lost from, you know, this, whether it be from lost or from the community center. Um, but we should not, I, I would not support us, um, uh, supplanting those dollars, um, for something else. I think it sounds like it provides us an opportunity, um, to make sure that we're whole at the end of the day, and I think that's the intent of those dollars. Um, and that I wouldn't want to, uh, replace any, uh, general fund, uh, budgetary items, um, with that. So I just, that's, I guess my, my position on that. Shouldn't live on borrowed dollars, I guess, is my point.
Yeah, but we don't know what, what it is, so. We don't know the dollar.
No, and I, I didn't say that we did, but, um, I guess I just, that's my, I just caution, um, us to, to think that way, but, um, and we, it sounds like we have a couple of fiscal years to, um, to allocate those dollars, Rochelle. Okay. Thank you. And so the information that I have, I got this afternoon. I'll be forwarding this to you guys tomorrow, just so you have it in case you get questions from, residents, um, and I'll forward all this information to you guys. My only other concern, and I'm not sure whether or not you have any insights on this, is, um, as we're dealing with, um, the state budget and my, my day job right now, is it doesn't appear that, um, at least at a state level right now, that any tax reductions can occur. And so my only question or concern would be whether or not if we did a levy reduction, um, or reduce that, that would be seen as a, um, a tax reduction. And then we wouldn't qualify for those federal dollars because of that. So I would caution us at this juncture from reducing that because I'm not sure that's clear yet, but I believe, um, that what I'm understanding right now at the state level is, is that the tax cuts they may have been considering, um, are clearly in question at this juncture because it's, because there is not to be, um, an initiative to utilize this to replace. And thus, anybody who would be doing tax cuts would then not qualify for dollars. Rochelle, I see you shaking your head. Yeah, so it actually does have two restrictions and that's the, there's only two restrictions. And the first one is funds cannot be used to directly or indirectly offset tax reductions or delay a tax or tax increase. Funds cannot be deposited into any pension fund. Those are the two restrictions to the funds.
Well, that's good to know. I'm glad, Teresa, you brought that up.
Although I will say, I do believe because this, um, these funds won't be received till May, anything we do with the current budget and knowing that those funds are actually debt service levy reserves, um, and it's clearly states that on our budget, I think we would be okay, but I, I don't absolutely know that for sure.
Right.
Any further discussion by council?
Teresa, I just have a, a question. You, uh, said that you wanted one point three million to go into, like, for lack of a better term, let's call it capital improvements or capital projects. Um, but the, like, if you look at what, what are you still agreeing to spend then? Or am I off in my, my numbers, which?
No, great question, Susan. So what I was doing was looking at the ATE funds where it has the one point five seven eight dollars and we were taking a hundred and thirty-five out of there. So that was where I was thinking that, that balance of, I guess, whatever, I guess it'd be one point four, um. I'm not a mathematician, my apologies. It would be one four, one point four million. One point four, something, some change, some forty-eight, right, or forty-three, something like that. Um, um, that's, that's, those are the dollars that I was talking about. So Rochelle, but are you saying that, but you've got this whole one point five seven eight, you're telling us, already in the capitals line? Yep, in the capital projects line. So whether you wanted to use it for the, um, uh, this public safety parking lot or whatever else you wanted to use it, we would have to use it out of capital projects. Okay, great.
And capital projects, that could be anything from, um, like flood work, like Mr. LaFredo was talking about, to parking lot, to, you know, whatever else may come up, uh, tennis court improvements or, you know, whatever. Capital, if you put it into capital projects, that's pretty much a generalization of anything and everything that we could possibly do. Is that correct?
Yep, that is correct. Any sort of infrastructure, um, parks, trails, um, streets, um, any sort of, any of those projects.
Including flood mitigation.
Including flood mitigation.
And then would we be, would this be more kind of publicized to the residents that we are not approving this as, you know, we, we're taking this and we're putting it into a fund as, as Teresa said. Um, we're not using this for what, you know, is written out in this budget per se, not to say that we couldn't or we won't, but right now, we are just approving this to go into the capital projects account to use at a later date with whatever, as city council, we approve.
Absolutely.
Oh, and then it, it matters what we do with the CIP, though.
Right, the CIP is your, is your driving force. The budget just tells the state what you're doing with the money, what you think you might do with the money. The CIP is where you get into the details, um, and is, is, um, a much more vital piece.
Mr. Mayor.
No.
If I could just jump in, our messaging after, for this, Susan, is going to be determined by what the council does on the CIP this evening. So, uh, there's been some talk about tabling discussion or voting on the CIP so that we could have additional discussion in a work session. If the council were to go that route, then our messaging that we're planning is to actually send out information to the citizens so that they can understand that these opportunities to comment and, um, learn more about the CIP are coming forward in the future, and that's how we would message that.
Thank you.
Any further comments on the budget?
I do have one more question. So, um, on the local option sales text, we have a hundred and seventy-two thousand, that's for the trail connection. So where does, um, Rochelle, is that also go into that capitals line? Is that where that dollar goes? It does. Mm-hmm, yeah. So you actually still, um, um, make the decision when we do the, the actual transfer of the money. So what it just shows in the budget is that we're, we're actually gonna utilize lost and that it's going into, um, the capital projects fund. But if you decide you don't want to do that project, you don't have to. Got it. I just wanted to make sure that that's where I knew. Um, so can you tell me, um, what line, um, or what is, what would, what is the total then that we are moving to, um, uh, capital improvements for this year out of all of our, and all of our lines that we'll have available for capital projects? Sorry, I know that might. No, no, that's okay. We're moving the one million, five hundred and seventy-eight thousand funds from the ATE. And then we're going to move, um, one hundred and seventy-two thousand from future trail connection to, um, capital project. And then there's some, there, then the other thing that it looks like in there is the funding of this equipment revolving plan, which is four hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
That's in that, uh, one point five million?
No, the one point five million plus the future trail connection of a hundred and seventy-two thousand. And then the lost, um, which is for the equipment revolving plan of four hundred and eighty thousand.
Okay, so that's not part of the capital improvement plan?
Well, it's still considered under that capital improvement fund. All that is within that capital improvement fund.
Okay, I guess I understand that. I'm not sure. Uh, it either is or.
Oh, I guess. Yeah, I, I would like, I thought we had a separate thing for that. I, my apologies for that confusion, I guess. It actually goes under capital improvements. Um, it's actually, within capital improvements, it's its own line, there, they're their own line items. But when I budget that, it actually all goes under capital improvements. Okay, as far as the overall, is what you're submitting to the state, okay. But then I'm assuming it, it includes this, uh, nine hundred and forty thousand dollars for street, future street projects too? Right, that's actually money that's already there. That was money that was allocated in twenty eighteen. Um, there's a million dollars sitting in, in there, in capital, in capital project right now, and we're just showing that as an expense. Got it. Okay, thank you. You're welcome.
Any further questions? We've got a motion in a second. Let's do a roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Fredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Which one are we voting on?
This is to adopt the resolution, or adopt the resolution to adopt the budget.
I understand.
Option A.
Oh, option A, sorry.
No.
And Harms.
Yes.
Dave, can I, can I say one more thing about the budget? We've approved it, but, um, with Teresa's statement about state and potentially replace these tax dollars, uh, that's what swayed my vote in leaving the levy where it is. I appreciate that, Teresa, you shared that.
You betcha, Mike. I just think it's important for us to not have ourselves in a situation, um, later on down the line where we don't get to receive some federal dollars, maybe because of a, uh, something we weren't informed about or didn't, um, have an educated decision about. So I, I, I want to err on the side of caution and that certainly, uh, helped me make my decision tonight as well. Thank you.
Next item is open the public hearing on the capital improvement plans. Motion to open.
Move to approve or move to go in an open session.
Second.
Roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Fredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
And Teresa Harms.
Public hearing is now open. Travis, do you have any information from public?
I do not.
Is there anyone who's on the open line that would like to comment or? If so, hit the chat line or open up your mic. Hearing none. Motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Back in.
Roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Fredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
And Teresa Harms.
Yeah.
Next item is consideration Resolution 2021-10. The resolution approving the capital improvements plan. Simp. Motion to consider.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Yeah, Dave, I'm gonna go back on my major item for the capital improvement plan, and that's the flood mitigation. Because I see that's the, uh, biggest elephant in the room as far as risk managing for this city. And, you know, I'm not against the park upgrades, but if you think, if that's a bigger priority than flood mitigation, and I'm, I'm also, I might as well comment about it now, disappointed that we haven't got any, um, up-to-date reports on where we are with, with that. So, uh, because I think it needs to start immediately, if not sooner. And, uh, you know, I think you got a bit of a roadmap with Clive. And because I think it all has to fit together, Windsor Heights, Clive, Urbendale, moving on that, including the crossroads, the, the NR. And so I think we need to get moving on that. Uh, the delay is adding more dollars to the cost of that. That's my feeling. So I, I think that's for me is the number one priority for that CIP.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Uh, Dalton is on the line. Um, we have reported on this issue many times. In fact, I would guarantee we've probably given a summary on this the last three council meetings. But we have developed, we've worked with Clive and we've worked with a number of other agencies to put together this RFP. The RFP is out and we are waiting for those, um, proposals to be submitted so that we can then bring to council a recommendation to hire a consultant to do that report, that analysis. Dalton, am I missing anything?
Nope, that's accurate. Um, I got a, an item in my staff report that, about that as well, but, uh, these are kind of slow-moving processes, but yeah, we're, we're, we're working on it, Mike. And I, we agree a hundred percent. This is really important and we're with you on that for sure.
Maybe, maybe, Dennis, I've been, um, neglectful or missed some discussion on the flood mitigation planning and, uh, and it's been a while since the public, uh, works committee met. But I, I, good, I'm, if, what I'm hearing you say is that we're seeking out proposals on that. And, uh, I would say it's about time. And so I'm interested in seeing those as I'm sure the other council members are. Because again, I think it's a travesty waiting to happen. So, and hopefully it's all been in conjunction with, with some neighboring. So that's where I'm, I'm not arguing with anybody at this point, but it needs to be, in my mind, the top priority for the CIP.
Other comments?
Thanks, Mike. You're welcome.
So, it was, um, re- referenced earlier that maybe the plan was to actually have a council work session on the CIP. Um, I don't recall, and again, my, my apologies if I overlooked it somewhere, but is there a new, um, street? And now, I don't want to call it analysis, but the individual street document, the Excel document or whatever, with the recommendations or updates and rankings on whatever. I know that last time Dalton said that that only updates every three years or whatever. Um, I know I have the one from a couple of years ago. I just didn't know where. I, I thought we were waiting for maybe an update to that. So I guess I'd just ask where that is, um, or if I missed an email, please direct me in, in that, or is the, uh, maybe I'll ask, is the will of the council then to have a word? Direct me in, in that or is the, maybe I'll ask, is the will of the council then to have a work session? So I feel like right now. This document doesn't really reflect the conversations that we've identified as priorities maybe. And so do we want to kind of have a more candid discussion about that and, and move that to a work session? I'm, I'm open. I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out where we are on this.
Well.
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Teresa and the rest of the council, we have begun working on updating that document for you. We met with our engineer last week. And we are, that's in progress. We anticipate that the council, in all the discussions that I've had. Really wants to have at least one more work session to discuss the different projects that are in the CI, draft CIP. And that's, that's welcome. That's perfectly fine. And so we would have that document ready for you when you have that work session. So tonight, for the mechanics of tonight's meeting, the first action, I think that I would suggest, if that's the desire of the council, is to table the CIP. Until a future date. And then to schedule a public hearing, and I think I indicated April ninth, April. I think it's the nineteenth, yes, April nineteenth.
April nineteenth for the net, the next, to have it on our, for consideration that the next. On the nineteenth.
I have two, I have two work session items tonight, and I, one of them is the fifth and one of them is the nineteenth, and I'm doing a double check to see what the. The Ponteflex work session is.
Okay, no, that's okay, Dennis. I was just seeking clar- clar- clarification because I, my apologies, but. So you're suggesting maybe we do the work session on the nineteenth?
I am.
Okay, all right, very good. All right, super. Then I would move, I would withdraw my motion to move this forward. I don't remember who seconded it.
Well, Teresa's gonna ask.
Sure.
Nineteenth, that will be devoted to the CIP. Is that correct?
CIP, yes. Table.
Session on the CIP on four nineteen.
Okay, so I, I have an original, the original motion was to approve by harm, seconded by Joseph, so I would need Joseph to withdraw his second.
I can withdraw my second.
Can I ask a question in here? After looking at Dalton's report, his. Public work staff report, I noticed that the, he states that the. RFPs are supposed to be back by March twenty third. And then there'll be a team of experts in the field from various agencies that will work with the, the submittals and evaluate the responses. How long do we feel that this is going to take? Because then it, it goes to, back to the. The public works committee to have them review this, and then if they agree to the proposal, then it'll come back to the city council. So will this be done by April nineteenth? Is this something that we will be looking at? By April nineteenth, or what, kind of what are we looking at as far as timeframes then? Because a lot of that would depend on what we decide or what comes back on flood mitigation and how much that's going to cost. Am I correct?
Susan, no, actually the two are not connected. This, the, the flood mitigation analysis is going to hire a consultant. To look at what the council's options are for addressing the flooding issue. And we expect that to be September, October, that you have that report in front of you. Whatever the council decides to do on the CIP, those capital projects will not begin work until after this whole flood and mitigation thing is wrapped up. And there's a direction going forward. So the, the council can make a decision after having a work session on the CIP. Just with the knowledge that we're not going to begin work on any of these capital projects that could potentially be impacted by flooding. And until the council sees there, the report from the consultant.
Well, but we'd be deciding where the money is spent. I think those things are pretty interwoven, are they not? Because if we're talking about putting this money into flood mitigation, presumably we're talking about potentially allocating the, the ATE money there, right?
That's where I was kind of.
Yeah, okay, yes. In that respect, that's true.
And. Yeah, and that, that's what my thinking is too, Mike Jones.
The other thing that I guess I would, I don't know if Rochelle can seek to find out whether or not any of the stimulus dollars would be allowed. To be used for flood mitigation as well, might be an inquiry as you guys are digging into that to figure out whether or not that would be an option. Because it'll be potentially infrastructure dollars.
We all definitely noted. Make sure that we find out if we can use the funds for that.
Thank you. Dalton, you also have in there that you submitted a grant application to Wellmark for their large match grant for a hundred thousand dollars for park projects. So do you know, I know that that was due in February. Do you know when their selection process or when you will hear back on that?
Yeah, I believe that's late March, they make determination. I believe that if you get selected, they ask for an interview, so we'll know hopefully in the next couple of weeks here.
Okay, thank you. Are there any, I mean, that would be really critical. I don't know if that would be helpful as well when we come into that meeting. If you can outline if there's any grant dollars that we've either applied for, received, or if there are any grants that we could potentially apply for. I know that we've been successful in some of those things in the past. So that would be helpful, just kind of get an idea of what you're thinking so that we can, you know, maximize any dollars we might put into any. You know, improvement efforts, particularly whether it be to the park or the trails or in any of the pieces that fit within the CIP. If you can outline that for us too, that we can have before the meeting on the nineteenth, so we can, you know, kind of have a full picture.
Yeah, definitely. I actually looked into some grant funding opportunities through the federal government for flood remediation. And a great resource actually was the city of Clive and their staff. They've obviously got some pretty extensive flood issues and. They're actually going at their flood thing. Really, I think it's just so clever is a good way to describe it. So they cautioned against accepting. Or really pursuing federal dollars really hard on some of the flood mitigation stuff. Because if you take the federal dollars and they largely drive exactly what's going to happen. So like what happened up on university. We took DOT, federal dollars through the DOT, and it's basically a DOT project now. So if we take federal dollars for flood remediation, they're going to greatly limit anything that we do within the flood plain in the vicinity of those projects. So they just really caution against, you know, they might say, yeah, they might, they might give you two hundred thousand dollars, but. The standard for the project is going to go up by a million dollars, and then they're going to severely limit what you can do. There's opportunities and we're looking into them and all that. So it's a good, good point though, for sure, especially with that ARP that Biden just passed.
You'll continue to look at for grant options though, as Teresa asked, right?
Yep, always.
Okay.
There's no further discussion. I'd entertain a motion to table this for a work session on four nineteen.
Move to table.
Second.
Roll call.
Susan Skerrys.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Mike LaFredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
And Teresa harms.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is.
It's, we're setting this for the nineteenth. Could we get a time on that?
Probably council meeting, isn't it?
It's a work session, so probably after the council meeting.
Yeah, it'll be right after the council meeting concludes.
Okay. Very good. Thanks for clarifying that.
Next item is public forum. Time for public to make any comments on city business other than what's on the agenda. Please announce yourself or let Travis know and speak up, please. Okay, next item is consent agenda, motion to approve.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Can I ask a question, Dave?
Yeah.
This is, I should know this, but Rory's Cafe, I'm not sure. I mean, it's. It's not where Brew was, is it?
Yes.
Yes.
Is that what it is?
Yes.
So we, so there is somebody going to fill that slot. Good, okay, very good. I didn't know that.
Does anybody from the city have an update that they can share on that specifically?
I don't recall, it's soon that they're going to be open. She wanted to get the license on this meeting, so. I would say it's going to be sooner than later, so that's all I know.
It's all relative, of course, so they don't have any definite date.
It's going to be primarily breakfast, food, breakfast and brunch type stuff.
That's what I understood.
Am I allowed to speak at this point?
Oh, go ahead.
I actually spoke with Simon today. So I have a little bit of an update on that location if I'm allowed to speak right now.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
He's actually looking at about three to four weeks to open. He actually is going to be open for dinner as well. He has a partner that he's working with now. And it's going to be breakfast, and then they're actually going to be working into some dinner as well.
Great. Now, now ma'am, when you talk about Simon, who is, who is that person?
Franklin and Merle Hay, Simon.
Okay, okay, is that the restaurant there? Okay, okay, that's what I thought, but I wanted. Okay, very good. Great. That's the information to ma'am. Thank you.
Thanks, Dee Dee. I, I understood that that's who was going in there, so I just wanted somebody else to verify and validate that. So thanks for sharing.
No problem.
Any other new businesses you can update us on?
Yes, but not officially yet, but I do know a few things that are going to be happening in Apple Valley. But I haven't spoken with them yet, so I would rather wait until I know just a little bit more.
Hey, let me ask you a question while we're, we're talking about these. Construction things is Jake's Fireworks. Now, is Jake leasing that building from the developer?
Mayor, if I can jump in on that one, they're having some issues with. Some sprinkler system. Capacity that we're working through. So I would imagine that there'll be an update on that in a couple of weeks.
But I, I want to go back to it. Did they buy the property or just Jake's, or did they, or are they leasing that?
I believe that they're leasing the, the ground and then they built the building.
Okay, so it's, were there any incentives given to that? By the city?
I can't help.
No. Okay, okay. Very good.
Any further comments on the consent agenda, otherwise roll call.
Susan Skerrys.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Mike LaFredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
And Teresa harms.
Yes.
Next item is under old business consideration, consider approval and acceptance of public safety compensation conducted by Pontiflex. I believe the recommendation is to table this for a work session on four five. At which time there will be other information provided. Dennis, is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. We hope to have the second phase that has the Pontifex report on City Hall and Public Works. Also available for the council prior to that work session.
It's four or five, the, the, the council meeting, who?
Yes, so we will have the work session immediately following the regular meeting.
I just don't have a calendar. So, very good, thank you.
Motion to table.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any other conversation? Roll call.
Susan Skerrys.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Mike LaFredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
And Teresa harms.
Yes.
Next item is consideration resolution twenty twenty one dash eleven. Proving the fiscal year twenty twenty one balance transfer for the city of Windsor Heights. Motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a quick reference. This actually happened in twenty eighteen and an ACH was done by the federal government, the Treasury Department. Into our general fund checking account. It actually should have went into the pre forfeiture bank account. So Chad actually was looking for the money because of the case, and he couldn't find it, so we had to find it. And this is just moving those funds into the pre forfeiture accounts.
Well, Chad's a good person to look for stuff.
He is, he really is. But yeah, so this occurred clear back in twenty eighteen, so we just need to move the money.
Okay, thank you.
Roll call.
Susan Skerrys.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Mike LaFredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
And Teresa harms.
Yes.
Next item is consideration resolution twenty twenty one twelve. To set the public hearing for the sale of city land to Casey's. We thought this has been taken care of our soul a couple of times, but I think they've asked for. The additional thirty days, so we're going to set up the public hearing on four five. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Susan Skerrys.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Mike LaFredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
And Teresa harms.
Yes.
Next item is council reports, Teresa.
Um, yeah, a couple of things. One, MAC met last Tuesday, Metro Advisory Council. Largely, we spent our entire time hearing legislative updates from the regional legislators. I'm grateful for their attendance and giving some perspective on what they're working on and hoping to. Get over the finish line this year. I, there, you know, there's, you know, a lot of different items. If anybody has any questions about something specifically, obviously with my day job hat on. I'm happy to answer anything. I have been paying attention to just different things that I think might impact us, but I don't think that there's. Well, there's certainly legislation that would impact us. I'm, I'm not sure where those are going to fall at the end of the day. As they're still largely moving through the process, but we are week ten. The legislature is set to adjourn on April thirtieth. The next funnel deadline is April second. The revenue estimating committee meets on this Friday. And that'll largely give the legislature an indication on what, that, how to set their budget targets, if you will, for fiscal year twenty two. I already just talked about, you know, the concern about doing any tax cuts. And that seems to be up in the air, but right now, depending on whether or not they get any direction from, from Congress. On whether or not they can do any legislation to, to cut any taxes will certainly. Be impacted by the ability to receive any federal. Dollars that was just passed by Congress. So just knowing that kind of all of those pieces are, are playing out right now. And then I just a shout out to Chad and his team for moving the speed sign over to sixty third street. I do understand we had a young, young man, I think the age of thirteen, who got hit by a car. Largely his, the, the team's fault, unfortunately. I know that he's doing okay. On, but I just wanted to bring attention. I know this has been an issue that we've talked about before, about safe crossings on sixty third. It still continues to be an issue and a concern, and every time we come to talk about those issues in particular. We talk about liability and is it our responsibility and nobody's ever been hit there and all of those sorts of things. And so I just want to bring that back up, that I still, as a, as a mom, as a parent and as a citizen of this community, still think that. There are, are large concerns with crossing on sixty third street, and I'd love to see some, some more things happen on that street. So, thanks, everybody.
Teresa, I don't know about you, but I still get, I just got a recent complaint about seventy third street too. Of course, the school is right there too. Well, the speeding that's going on there. And, and Chad, I will, I will, I forward that email to you.
Yeah, please do. And we regularly have an officer that sits in the Clive Learning Academy parking lot throughout the day. They're there. It seems like every time I go up and down seventy third, but also just so you're aware, we are taking the. But also just so you're aware, we are taking the, uh, speed signs that were connected to the ATEs, just the digital readout signs. And we're going to place those on 73rd around Clive, uh, one southbound, one northbound. One will be done once it thaws a little bit this fiscal year and one will be done next fiscal year. So that's on the horizon as well.
Well, that's good. Uh, yeah, I will send that to you and you can respond. Uh, in fact, I think I told her I was going to refer it to public safety, so then I didn't do it. So a good reminder for me.
I'll make one additional comment. Uh, we had both, uh, Jennifer and Sarah on the call that, uh, uh, MAC meeting with Teresa and me. So we did have our representatives present at that discussion. Um, Mike, you got anything else to say, committees? LaFredo?
Uh, no, because the public works has not met for quite a while.
Mike Jones?
Yeah, we had Bravo last week. Uh, the, uh, awards were announced last Friday and $2.4 million, 65 different organizations. And apparently it's about half a million dollars more than Bravo has ever invested in a six-month period. The 2021 Gala was a resounding success. Um, it was non-existent. It was over, over the, uh, the internet. But, uh, so many sponsors stepped up. It actually made more money than it did it back in 2020. So, uh, there was a great deal of, uh, money transferred to further grant making. That's it for me.
Mr. Joseph Jones?
We had, uh, GART meeting back at the very beginning of the month after our first council meeting of the month and mostly focused on legislative update, both, uh, state and federal, and we reviewed, um, some of our policies for the federal government and had a update from our federal lobbyists, our new federal lobbyists. So, um, looking forward to working with them. We approved our, um, levied budgets and otherwise, um, everything else is in the report that you got from Elizabeth.
Thank you. Susan?
Um, there's a Metro Waste meeting on Wednesday where a discussion about an increase in the curbet recycling rate will be held. Um, the Economic Development Committee will be meeting on Thursday morning. And then I'm just kind of curious. I know that this was put off until spring and maybe today after the snow, it's not really spring yet, but, um, just kind of wondering about the intersection of 73rd Street and University, the turning lane, um, as you're heading east, as you're turning kind of left onto, uh, 73rd Street from University, uh, by Flowerama. Just wondering where we're at at reconfiguring that intersection since, um, the lines are very confusing and I have seen multiple almost accidents as I drive through that area. So I think it's, I know that we talked about, um, that I received an email from Dennis, uh, that this is being discussed and it will be, um, updated in the spring, but just kind of wondering the status on that, if anybody knows.
Yeah, Susan, um, Dalton can fill the details in, but it's more than just being discussed right now. We're actually getting quotes from, um, the contractor that does the striping for us. Dalton, do you, when, when do you think that we'll have those quotes and make, be able to make a decision?
Well, we actually met with the university contractors this afternoon, um, a very, a way too early kickoff meeting, but just to make sure we're on the same page. And, um, briefly talked about this, Susan, and, um, the gist is basically if we have them come in just to do that as soon as we can, we're going to pay more. Um, and if we wait until we do striping on the, the chunky university that they paved last year, um, if they do them both at the same time, we'll get better pricing for it. So, um, we're going to wait. I mean, if it's the council's will to have it done immediately, we can certainly do that. Doesn't really matter one way to me.
How much more expensive?
That's what I was going to ask. How much more expensive are we talking?
I mean, we pay another MUB charge for it, so, uh, I, I'd have to find out, I guess.
I would be curious just to know because that, I am, I follow the lines and that is so confusing there. And it's not just confusing to me, but it's confusing to 95% of the people that drive through there. And as someone that does drive through there, it's always, okay, I have to look for Clive power equipment and then I have this little brief moment that I can jump over into that lane and then, but not everybody knows this. So I just kind of like to know how much we're talking.
Uh, Dalton, does the one striping?
So Susan, we'll bring you a change order next council meeting and just have it done right now. My guess is it is.
Does, does the weather impact the striping?
Yeah, Mike, you don't want to do it and it's really cold because you gotta get good, good adhesion between the paint and the pavement and then.
That's what I would think. It'd be better if.
So we'll, we'll get you a change order and you guys can decide and I'll ask what kind of savings there are if we, if we wait.
That would be good. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Any further comments? If not, uh, we can entertain a motion to adjourn to an exempt session.
Hey, Dave, one thing.
This meeting.
I'm sorry, one thing real quick I forgot to ask about that was on my notes. Um, any update on the Special Events Committee?
It'll come up next week, not next, next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to adjourn to the exempt session.
So moved. To adjourn.
Roll call.
Skerrys.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Mike LaFredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
And Teresa Harms.
Yes.